Hi Steve.
Hello everyone. Let's let everybody in from the waiting room. Hello. Hello there. Hey. Easy, Zach. Do you want? Find this?
How do we? I'm in like John's. Get.
Be aware that we may be able to hear you unless you're on mute. Unless you're on mute.
Hello.
Hello there.
Hello there.
We have not started yet.
This is Liz. Can you see me?
Can I see Liz? Hold on, I gotta minimize this.
Sorry. I don't know what my background looks like. I've not sat in this location before. I wanna make sure it's... Is it not too disturbing or odd?
We got you, Liz. You're looking alright. You look wonderful. You look like you're outside and comfortable.
I am outside. I decided to try my phone. Last time I listened on my phone and did it on my computer and I thought, well, why? So now I'm just on my phone. So we'll see how that... Oh crap.
Listen. I'm gonna stop the meeting in about a minute or two. I just wanna make sure that I admit any last-minute stragglers.
Steve, can you tell how many people are joining just to listen or to be to observe?
Well, I can tell you at the moment, we have twenty-two participants.
Okay, that's good. I'm glad.
Alright, it's uh, it's seven oh two, so I am going to uh, open the meeting. Okay, I'm calling to order the meeting for Thursday, May twenty-eighth of the Town of Born Planning Board. Uh, this meeting will be broadcast live on Born PB, also via Zoom. Um, you can zoom in with your computer, or you can also zoom in by way of uh, by calling in. Um, uh, the meeting is recorded. Please be aware that at any given moment when you're on uh, in the meeting, uh, people can see you. Be careful not to share your screen, uh, unless you intend to do that. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the minutes for... Remember, let's put up the minutes. So the, the first agenda item is the minutes for two thirteen twenty. Uh, every vote that we do this evening has to be by roll call vote. So first thing I'm gonna ask is if we have a motion to approve the minutes for February thirteenth, twenty twenty.
I wanna get off the video.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty?
So.
Is that second?
Second.
Okay, uh, we're gonna do a roll call vote. So uh, let's go with Dean Azarbitz.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Clegg.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Doucette.
Yes.
Good thanks.
Louis.
Yes.
Um...
Okay, good.
Miss Brown.
Ms. Goldstein, on minutes for February thirteenth, twenty twenty, there's a motion to approve that's been seconded. How do you vote? This is the February thirteenth minutes. You have to put on your... We can't hear you. You have to put on your audio. Okay, we're gonna give Ms. Goldstein a minute here. Ms. Goldstein.
I am. You are unmuted by house.
Now you're on... Ms. Goldstein, you're unmuted.
Thank you.
Don't need to touch anything. On the minutes for February thirteenth, twenty twenty, there's been a motion made to approve. How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. O'Connor. Ms. O'Connor? Ms. O'Connor? Yeah, he's gonna have to uh, gonna have to put his audio on.
Steve, did you call me? This is Liz.
Liz, I'm calling you now. How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. O'Connor? Okay, I'm gonna call that the motion passes by majority vote. Uh, the minutes for... The minutes for...
Go on.
For, for February twenty-seventh twenty. Ms. Goldstein.
May I make a motion to suspend these minutes until the next meeting, June eleventh, it should be, or could be. Uh, I need to make some changes or to edit my comments. I spoke with Ann earlier today, and she's, she's working from home, remote, and can't make the changes till she gets back in the office. So I could... Would that be possible?
We can, we can uh, we can continue those to the next meeting.
Do you mind? That would be...
Not, not at all. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna pass on that. Uh...
Thank you.
Text off O'Connor, tell him he's not performing. Steve O'Connor. Okay. Alrighty, the... The next item for the agenda is item number two. This is the preliminary wastewater application uh, for two twenty-three Main Street. Okay, before, before we uh, have the applicant um, do his presentation, uh, I just wanna be clear on, on a number of things here. What we're being asked to do with the wastewater allocation is do a preliminary analysis of the property. And that analysis is to determine whether or not the requested uses are allowable uses, whether in this case, if it...
I don't know how you do it.
It's with the downtown area.
But why?
I don't have a view.
He doesn't have a view yet.
I don't... Hold on, I need you to mute yourself. Okay, I need you to mute yourself. Okay. So uh, so the review here is, is it allowable use? Does it fit in with the downtown district? Does it align with the growth incentive zone, and does it lie and comply with the LCD? Ultimately, the project will come back to us in some iteration. And at that point, it's appropriate to talk about all the aspects of the project, such as traffic, density, stormwater management, things of that nature. So I'm better ask that the board focus on strictly what we're being asked to do tonight is a preliminary uh, assessment based on that criteria. Now, the other thing I wanted to point out is, is it's something I think uh, is, is a little bit misleading. And that is when somebody comes in front of the board and they ask us for a certain allotment. For, in, in, for instance, they use the Title V standards when they ask for an allotment. So they may come to us and they may ask for fifty thousand gallons, which sounds like a lot of capacity, considering we have about a hundred and ninety-some available. However, the reality of the situation is they typically will use about forty percent of that allotment. So that would be, in the case of fifty thousand gallons, they would be using twenty thousand gallons. But the thing is, when they come in front of us, when it gets reported in the record or in the newspaper, that number of fifty thousand gallons is what it's read. And um, I, I just think that's somewhat misleading to the public, and maybe even some board members. Uh, but it takes up to three years for them to adjust the number uh, based on, you know, the amount of water that goes through a, a particular building uh, before they can return that full allotment. So just want folks, maybe at home, the folks uh, who are zoomed in with us to understand that you hear that big number, that is in reality not ultimately the number that uh, that the, the end user is going to, uh, going to need. So uh, at that, at this point then, I think what I'd like to do is ask the applicant to unmute himself. Um, give us a narrative of the conceptual plan. And um, if they, if you wanna screen share, um, the applicant that is, um, that is fine. You have the um, ability and the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clegg.
Could you please identify the board members who are sitting and will be voting tonight?
Yeah, hold on one sec on that one, sec on that one. Mr. Clegg is present, Mr. Callow is present, Mr. Doucette, Ms. O'Connor, Ms. Brown, um, Jean. Jean, are you here?
Yes, I am.
John Carroll? John Carroll is not here. Um...
I'm here.
Ms. O'Connor, T S Sanders here. So Mr. Meyer is sitting in, and Mr. Meyer would vote on special permit, which is the uh, backlot subdivision.
So otherwise, we have eight people voting, is that right?
Yeah, if it's not a special permit, it would be uh, eight votes. And special permit, um, Mr. Meyer can vote on that. So, Mr. Meyer, we thank you for being here tonight. We certainly appreciate that. Okay, uh, Mr. Bracken, I believe you're doing the uh, presentation?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Uh, also on this meeting are Irene and Fred Carbone, the owners of the property and operators of the motel, which I'm sure many of you are probably familiar with, that have been there for a long time. Um, the purpose of this application, again, is just for the allocation for sewer flows. Um, the applicants are seeking to uh, market the property for sale. And we took a look at the zoning bylaws, and um, and we did a survey of the property. And we came up with what we thought would be the best in uh, probably maximum use of the property. Um, you know, based on the topography and configuration, it looks like housing, uh, in this case would work best. Um, the project does include some uh, mixed-use retail uh, within thirty feet of the street line as required by the bylaw. So again, uh, as you said, Mr. Chairman, we were here for the allocation and for the planning board's determination uh, that the project is viable and consistent with the bylaws and regulations. Um, if I'll, if I could share the screen at this point, um...
Please do.
Okay.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So uh, this first plan, it's included in the site plan uh, that you received, except I, I separated out the existing conditions just to give you a quick glimpse of what the site looks like right now. Um, it's about just, just under three acres. Um, the site has a hundred and ninety-three feet of frontage on Main Street. It has two existing curb cuts. Uh, the main building, uh, that's used as a residence and office building and for the motel was constructed around nineteen twenty. Uh, there's about seventeen rental units, uh, cabin-style type rentals. Uh, that were built sometime around nineteen fifty. So uh, you know, it's been in operation for quite some time. Uh, the, the north is sort of going to Angley up to the left of the sheet, but um, the, the property is not bounded by the bypass. There is a separate parcel in between the bypass and this parcel. But the western portion of this area is uh, well vegetated and wooded. Um, to the northeast, uh, we have the uh, ice cream restaurant, some residential uh, properties. Um, up to the northeast, we have the ball fields uh, that, that the town owns. And adjacent to the property, to the west on Main Street is Dunn's Insurance. And then further north to that, there's another residential property. So as you can see, there's a mix of properties a- around us. And then there's boat storage, um, to the far north in, in between the property and the bypass. So we have municipal, we have commercial boat storage, we have uh, residential, we have office space, and we have uh, restaurant-type use. So we have changed this, the screen, um, go to the proposed plan. I can go back to the other one if, if you want. Um, so here is the proposed plan. Um, you know, we established the number of units uh, based on the bylaw for market rate, which allows one unit per two thousand square feet of land area. And then in addition to that, you're allowed ten percent of that number for affordable units, um, which works out to uh, eight units. So we end up with, it's a total of seventy-two units, uh, which would uh, that includes the eight units of affordable. Uh, we have uh, enough parking.
Sure. Mr. Bracken, could I ask you to make that a little bit bigger if you can? It's just, it's, it's hard to, to see the finer detail.
Yep, let me uh, I'll start at the front of the site, then I'll work backwards.
Thank you.
Is that better?
That, much better.
Okay, great. Um, so the proposal is to maintain both existing curb cuts. We would be increasing the northern curb cut um, from, I think, twenty-one feet to twenty-four feet, so that we have two-way traffic going in each direction. Um, you know, depending on the final layout, maybe it could, you know, may make more sense to do one way, but we laid this out as two-way, so we could have perpendicular parking around the building. As I mentioned, um, within thirty feet of the front street line, uh, we have uh, a commercial use on the first floor. Once you get past the thirty feet, um, you're allowed to go with, in our opinion anyway, residential uses on the first floor. Um, and this building in total would be most likely a four-story building. And this front building would have fifty-two residential units uh, on it.
How many, Don?
The front building would have fifty-two residential units.
The front building?
The front building. And...
Could you please clarify the, the... What is the total number of residential units? Because your, your application for wastewater says fifty-two residential units. And your, your March nine uh, package to the town planner says seventy-two units.
That, yeah, so that was a mistake. It's seventy-two.
Seventy-two, thank you.
Yep. So the fifty-two in the front building, and then two buildings with ten units each in the back. So uh, still focusing on the front, we uh, you know, the, the, the site elevations, we're, we're around elevation fourteen, fifteen at the street. We go up to a high point in the back area above forty-two. So there's a pretty decent grade change from front to back. The flood zone comes across the front of the site. Um, we would anticipate that, well, we know that the first floor would be above that flood zone. Um, it's only, uh, again, that the flood zone is elevation sixteen and the grade's about fifteen. So um, we would be able to comply with uh, flood zone requirements uh, in the final, final design and final building plans.
Could I ask something?
Well, I'd like to let Mr. Bracken get through his presentation, and I'll open up the uh...
Just like there was AE velocity zone.
It's an AE flood zone, not a velocity zone.
Okay, that's all I want.
Sorry, I should've mentioned that.
That's okay.
Um, and then as you can see, the bylaw requires a ten-foot vegetated strip around, or boundary around the project. Um, you can see we, we showing them here on the sidelines, and it continues around the site. Um, so moving back, um... You know, we try to take advantage of the site, topography up here, also uh, views um, of, of the train bridge in this direction. Um, again, I, being, being schematic, um, this is what we would anticipate. Somebody would probably, you know, uh, build something in this type of orientation. Um, there's plenty of room around the buildings. Um, and as I said, you know, there's uh, also uh, areas beyond the parking in addition to the ten-foot vegetated strip required to add additional landscaping. This does, doesn't show proposed grading, but when we developed the plan, we, we did do our own uh, grading analysis um, to make sure that it was all gonna work with the configuration that we have, and it does. And what you see on this plane is just the existing grading for now. Um, so if I can get, go back to that, um, if anyone wants to zoom in on anything in particular. But uh, again, they, so we, we have, you can't have more than fifty percent of, of the units, the same number of bedrooms. So we're right at fifty percent. This proposal is, is for thirty-six one-bedroom units and thirty-six two-bedroom units. Uh, we're not proposing any three-bedroom units. So we have a hundred and eight bedrooms total. So the, the total flow that we're asking for is just under twelve thousand gallons per day. Uh, because it's a small retail footprint that generates a hundred and five gallons per day. It's not a high flow for that. And the exact number for the residential is eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty gallons per day. Um, and as the chairman stated, that, that these numbers are much higher than what would be predicted. Uh, Title V hasn't changed its calculation since the seventies at, at a hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom. So that's super conservative. The other, the, the Title V number of a hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom also considers that a peak flow. Uh, the average flow is actually fifty-five gallons per day per bedroom. So um, sometime in the future, whether it's three, four years, when the site is reevaluated for what the actual water flow is, I'm sure that there's gonna be at least half of this flow going back um, in, into the allotment system for other people um, to, to ask for at a later date. And then I guess the last thing is, we have, we've been working with uh, Tim Lyden at the engineering department on some other details, uh, you know, to get to the next step when we get to the sewer commissioners. Um, one thing that was, was pointed out in Karen's memo was that we don't have an allotment for the site yet. So we don't have an exact amount we're gonna request. You know, the information we provided to you is just a total amount. Um, requested amount will be minus whatever the existing allotment is. Um, and that's, in the allotment, the way the town is figuring it right now is based on the water meter readings. And what makes this project a little different is because it's a seasonal use. And um, based on the readings that we've gotten so far, we're not, we're not sure how accurate they are. So we're gonna be working on that with the town. But that's sort of, I, I think it hopefully is irrelevant at this stage, you know, um, and that we'll, we'll figure that out before we get the exact numbers, when, before we get to the uh, sewer commissioners. And I think with that, um, done with the presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Bracken. Um, in order to have an orderly discussion, um, I really, it, actually, Mr. Bracken, if you can take that down, but have it at the ready?
Yep.
Uh, what I'd ask you to do is in the chat feature at the bottom, we're gonna, what we're gonna do is the planning board is going to uh, ask any questions that they would like of Mr. Bracken and the applicant. Uh, although this is not, a, a public hearing is not a requirement of what we're doing tonight. Uh, if anybody in the audience, uh, a member of the public does uh, want to weigh in on this uh, strictly based on uh, conceptual plan and sewer allotment, and um, at my discretion, I will allow that. So, that being said, is there any member of the planning board that wishes to ask Mr. Bracken or the applicant any questions? Ms. Goldstein.
Of course, you knew that. Is any part of this uh, project of the, the existing motel subject to historic commission approval? Does this have to, I heard nineteen twenty for a certain building, and the others are nineteen fifty?
That's correct. So we will have to go to the historic, uh, the, whoever the applicant is gonna be when they put together their out, special permit applications, they will have to at some point go to the historic to get permission to demolish that existing building.
Just that one building. The other is one fifty... Nineteen fifty-five.
Yeah.
Better hurry up. Um, on the two buildings with ten units each, how, how big, what, are those buildings going to have uh, just apartments, or is it a commercial plus apartments on top? So how many floors would that be? That's, how many stories?
Uh, yeah, right now with that footprint, we think that it would only be three stories to get the ten units. The footprints are about forty-five hundred square feet. Uh, we looked at other apartment condo-type projects and compared the square footages, um, to come up with these footprints.
So three stories, and does it have commercial on the first floor?
No, I'm sorry, no commercial on the first floor, no.
None.
All residential, yes.
All residential. So three stories. Townhouse or all one?
Well, we're not, it really is gonna be up to whoever the applicant is gonna be. I mean, we would anticipate, like, my guess would be that people would lean towards apartments more than townhouses in this type of situation. But um...
Apartments can be townhouse.
Yeah, either, either way, we're, we're not sure what the ownership is gonna...
Right.
My ownership is gonna be like...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don, uh, is it true that the front building is two stories stepping back to four stories?
Uh... No, I, I think, um... Yes, yep, let me, I have to check the plan one more time before I...
So the, so the height of the front building would be four stories, the height of the two buildings in the rear would be three stories?
Right, so, you know, again, it's not, I, I don't think we got that specific, but I think um, you're right. The way it's labeled on the plan, uh, this plan would be just a second-story residential use in that first thirty-foot section, and then after that, it would go to four stories.
Go to four.
I imagine that...
In fact, the rear buildings are gonna be elevated because of terrain.
Right.
They'll actually probably be higher
Right.
than the one in front.
Um... Yeah, I think, you know, architecturally, to give it depth, I think that's what somebody should do, or would want to do.
Right, right, I agree. I think it's a great layout, Don. Um, one minor point, on those two buildings in the rear,
Mm-hmm.
um, how would emergency vehicles turn around if they had to go up in, behind the building?
Uh, I mean, most likely, we could, um, we, we could put a driveway all the way around it if we had to. Or we could use, uh, you know, like a reinforced turf, emergency access type, type driveway getting around it. Um, but I think there would be enough turning radius for a fire truck to go all the way around if it had to, so...
Okay.
I...
I just wanted to make sure you're thinking about that, because it, it dead ends pretty quick back up in... back up in there. My last question is, is there a purchase and sale agreement on the property now, or is it just on the market?
I don't even think it's actually hit the market yet, I think we have to do this first before it gets advertised. But I, I did wanna bring up one point, whether, you know, people realize in the bylaw or not, we originally designed this project in, this was our second draft, the first one after Corinne reviewed it. We had one building up there, which seemed to make a little more sense, I, we also had room for other amenities, but the bylaw limits you to ten units per building, so that's, just so everyone understands, that's sort of how we came up with this configuration. Otherwise, I think personally, I, I would have leaned more towards one building in this case, but.
Well, I'd just say it's a great, great layout, seems to be an appropriate use of the property, and certainly will fill a need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Further from the planning board, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. Just like to comment that I think this project is exactly what the downtown districts and growth incentive needs in this zone far. I, I'm a little confused, are we just voting on the allocation for the wastewater tonight? And also, Don, I know the grade change is so great here, what do you foresee for stormwater use, or potential for the?
Okay, let me, let me address those two things. Okay, tonight, it, it was reported in the paper last time we had a wastewater allocation meeting, that the planning board granted wastewater allocation. We do not do that, we don't have the authority to do that, that's the sewer commissioners' exclusive jurisdiction. We're just being asked at this moment to essentially, and what it boils down to is, to essentially say, is this potentially a viable project? So we're not wasting everybody's time. So ultimately, if the board tonight makes a positive recommendation with the findings that this is apparently a viable project, and it'll proceed along in the process, but I wanna be clear, and it's, this was, it was reported indirectly in the paper, we do not give sewer allocation strictly the, the sewer commissioners. As far as things, and maybe you, you related on the meeting, Mr. Gallo, but when the project ultimately comes before the planning board, and it's, we know what ultimately the project is when they apply, that's when we will look at things like stormwater management, entity, traffic, parking, all of those concerns. So the scope of review tonight is, is really very narrow and very limited, just with the idea of moving this project one step closer to where it ultimately would be. But they will have to come back to us for a full hearing at some point in time in the future. And quite frankly, the project may look very different when they come in front of us. This is conceptual in nature, so we have to bear that in mind. Does that sort of address your questions and concerns, Mr. Gallo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Further from the board, okay, I can't see everybody who's in the audience, so, a question, Mr. Bracken stated, working with the town, let me, let me, let me read this first, and then, then I may read it. Okay, this is a question related to wastewater, so, Mr. Bracken, I'm gonna ask you the question and, and ask you to address it. Mr. Bracken stated, working with the town, has he or the applicant worked with the Buzzards Bay Water District Commissioners? Most recent superintendent report made twelve, Mr. Souza stated that at this time, none is available. They have already passed the DEP limits prior to or temporary project planning board preliminary wastewater allocation, and it's available on the Buzzards Bay Water District website. So if you want to address that, Mr. Bracken?
Yes, the only information that I was aware of was in Corinne's report that we did not get a final report back from the, the water district, so I'm not aware of any final report that says that water isn't available. We did, I did answer some questions to the water district as far as what the use was, that it would have a fire suppression system, that there's not a proposed pool at this time for the project. So that's all I'm aware of, I'm, like I said, I'm not aware that it has been determined that there's not enough water for the project.
Well, as, as part of this process, we do reach out, we do reach out to the water district and ask them to weigh in on the project. And any positive or negative, well, we'll just assume it's a positive recommendation, but any positive recommendation from the planning board carries with it the caveat that the water department, the fire department, that they're ultimately satisfied with, with the project. So it's something I think, I'm glad it was brought up, because it's something I think you need to take a look at, and the planning department will also follow up on that as well.
Will do that, absolutely.
Any further comments or questions from the public? Okay, is there a planning board member with a motion to make? Mr. Dusset?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to forward a positive recommendation to the board of sewer commissioners for preliminary sewer allocation for the project located at two twenty-three Main Street. The project has been reviewed by the planning board and purported uses are allowable uses pursuant to sections twenty-eight eleven and twenty-eight twenty of the town zoning bylaws. The project as presented appears to be a viable project in the downtown Buzzards Bay Growth Incentive Zone, and the project is presented comprised with the goals of the local comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Dusset. Is there a second on that motion?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Gallo. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Clegg?
No.
No discussion, okay. Discussion on the motion from any other planning board member? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. If you are muted, please unmute yourself if you're a planning board member. First person, Mr. Clegg?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Dusset?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarevitz?
Yes.
Ms. Goldstein?
Yes.
Chair of all TS. Thank you very much, Mr. Bracken, excellent presentation, and I think we look forward to the project when it ultimately heads to us.
Me too, thank you very much. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, the next agenda item is public hearing with special permit number oh-two-dash-two-zero-two-zero. This is two seventy-four Williston Road, Sagamore Beach. You create a backlot subdivision for one additional dwelling. Let me pull my zoom back up here. Mr. Bezinski, are you the engineer on this project?
I am, sir, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
I can, can speak to everybody, but I can. Okay, Mr. Bezinski, just so, we, we have a fair amount of participants tonight, and just want to talk about the process. So what we're gonna do now is, we're gonna have the applicant through the engineer present the board with the project. Project has been reviewed by planning board member David O'Connor, he will make comments on the project. I will then open the discussion up with the planning board members. After that, I will open up discussion for the public in, in general. If you wanna speak at the time it's opened up to the public, there is a chat feature at the bottom of the, of the screen, you can use that, and, and if you feel more comfortable just typing in your question as opposed to going on, on live, then feel free to do that as well. So that, and then ultimately, we typically vote on it. There is a special permit, you have nine members that will be voting on it, and a special permit requires a supermajority of a minimum of six votes. That being said, Mr. Bezinski, the floor is yours, feel free to screen share, and I'd ask that, Mr. Bracken just did a wonderful job of really zeroing in on the areas he's talking about, if you have that same ability, that certainly I think would be appreciated by board members and the public in general. Mr. Bezinski?
All right, I'm actually working from two screens right now, one from my phone, because the camera on my computer isn't working at the time, and then I'm gonna share my computer screen. Let's bring that over here. Zoom in on this for you. Again, for the record, Zach Bezinski, professional engineer, with a degree in engineering. Here this evening on behalf of the applicants, Dana and Luanne Hannah, who will probably be on Zoom with us this evening, also on behalf of the current property owners, Edmund and Nancy Gantos. Again, as mentioned, the property site is two seventy-four Williston Road, a vacant lot located over the Sagamore Beach section of town. Currently, lot is, Tishaya thirteen acres, twelve-point-eight acres, with frontage on Williston Road, a hundred and eighty-seven feet frontage from the road. Property is abutted to the north by homes that have frontage off of Pilgrim Road, and then to the west by homes off of Williston Road. Lot sits in the R forty zoning district currently. Lots around us were created prior to zoning, when it was the B twenty, oh, sorry, the B two zoning district. Lots in the area range from twenty thousand square feet up to just over forty thousand square feet. Project is abutted to, with a residential single-family house lot to the south of us at two seventy Williston, and then a Mass Creek and associated wetland system to the east. So as mentioned, the Gantos's are looking to sell the property, Dana and Luanne Hannah are looking to subdivide the lot and create a lot for themselves and bring up the proposed So as mentioned, in the application, we're looking to do a backlot subdivision under section twenty-four ninety. As part of this, we're looking to create three lots on the project, lot one being a forty thousand square foot lot right off Williston Road with the required hundred and twenty-five foot frontage and the required forty thousand square foot lot area. The second lot is the lot we're creating under, requesting approval under section twenty-four ninety. This lot meets all the requirements as laid out in the bylaw, double lot area, has access with a thirty-five foot strip off of Williston Road, will provide twenty-five foot buffers along the perimeter of the site. The lot also contains a lot area of a hundred and twenty-five square feet by a hundred and twenty-five square feet, just one of the requirements of the backlot subdivision. The third lot is an unbuiltable lot that would be created to the east, and that is , would be comprised of all the wetland system on the lot. Project has had perks on it, passed perks, and the project has been reviewed by the North Sagamore Water District, and an email was sent to planning staff. Pretty simple, we believe the project has been designed in conformance with the zoning bylaw. Project would be reviewed at a later date by the fire department once the final house placement is established on back lot through here. But as you can see, we are proposing a fifteen-foot wide driveway down the middle, and then we'll be adequate turning around for fire apparatus to get back out on the Williston Road. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will pretty much turn it back over to the board.
Thank you very much. As I said, this project was reviewed by Mr. O'Connor, so, Mr. O'Connor, could you share your thoughts and comments, if that's please?
I think Zach covered most of the high points. I've gone through the backlot division criteria, and I haven't found anything that he hasn't covered that is objectionable. I would like to emphasize a little bit on the, the buffer zone. I'm gonna see if I can, if I can bring up a graphic. Okay, just a second. Is that visible?
That's, I think that's good.
Okay, fine. The, the backlot subdivision criteria requires a twenty-five foot buffer on the, the property lines. Clearly, it's important to have it on the Pilgrim Road and behind seven, two seventy-six Williston Road. It also includes buffer against lot one, and also buffers the two seventy Williston Road. The graphic shows the buffering ended at the fifty-foot buffer from the coastal bank, so beyond the fifty-foot buffer, I'm gonna go out on a limb here saying there's not likely to be any vegetation removed there, but that's in the purview of the conservation commission. Note that, under a normal subdivision, that would be a fifteen-foot setback, and I think I'd recommend that it be enhanced by making it a condition of the project that no vegetation be disturbed within the buffer, that is, a full twenty-five feet of undisturbed vegetation. Zach showed an aerial photograph, at some point we may wish to go back to that, and you can see it's fairly dense cover around there. There's a couple of reasons. I think there is quite a bit of cover, and it goes up to a fair elevation, there are vines climbing the trees, there's mature trees and sizable vegetation going up eight to twelve feet high, and I think that's worth preserving, simply as a conservative approach to developing the property. It's also a dense little thicket that's a wildlife habitat, and if that were to be changed to another type of screening, I think it'd be necessary to clear at least a significant part of the buffer to put in a fence or, or landscaping. It'd be my recommendation that that remain just as an undisturbed buffer. The, the buffer strip at the access drive, we'd like to recommend to the fullest extent possible that the vegetation be preserved on those ten-foot strip, we recognize that has to be to the fullest extent possible, because there's likely to be grading on the access drive. I think that covers most, oh yes, the, there are some percolation test pits that have disturbed at least a little bit of the vegetation in the buffer zone, and I'd recommend a, a condition to replant those disturbed perk test sites with native species that will grow up and fill in that, any damage to the buffer in those locations. That's, that's about all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. O'Connor. As you know, Mr. O'Connor and I walk the land, and that area, that, in that twenty-five foot buffer is a tremendous habitat for nesting birds, wildlife, and it provides, just by its very nature, quite a bit of privacy, and it appears to me to be a, a resource area unto itself. So that condition you'd suggested that you may recommend, I think, is an important consideration in the project.
So, well, very briefly, I'll just show an image of that, what it looks, it's a fairly dense thicket, native plants, mature trees, cat brier, it's quite dense and it's fairly tall, so that's just for background information. So that's just for background information.
Excellent work, Mr. O'Connor. All right, if you can take that down though.
I believe I have.
No, it's still up.
It's still up. Wait a minute. Just a second. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Was it Ms. Brown that wanted to be recognized?
It is. I wanted to ask, I also walked the property the other day. And it was cleared fairly extensively. And in one location, the buffering was really cleared right up to the lot line of one of the properties on Pilgrim. So how do you restore that? Is that just a landscaping problem?
I'm sorry, finish.
No, I think she was finished. You should, you feel that question, Mr. O'Connor?
I would consider it essentially a landscaping problem. And that is putting in native materials, it will take some time for it to grow up. Those were areas that were cleared out for perk tests, I'm pretty sure. And we would make that a condition of the approval, that it, that it be planted with native materials at least somewhat matching the existing material. There may be some improvements to be made. And over time, that would fill in. I would not recommend a fence.
Okay.
Anything further, Ms. Brown? Anything further, Ms. Brown?
Okay. No.
Ms. Goldstein and Mr. Gallo, then Mr. Clegg. Ms. Goldstein?
Yes, in one of the most recent shot of the property there, the buffer zone, there was quite a bit of, maybe it's the same spot that Ms. Brown's referring to, where there was a lot of dead trees. And it looked like stuff that'd been there a long time parched and bleached out. Is that just natural progression of a forest, all that debris there?
I think that was the perk test site.
Oh, that was okay. That stuff looked like it had been there a long time, not newly fell by any means. It looked pretty. Is this buffer zone that I see on this, is this something that the property can, has enough land to allow? Or is this a requirement?
Oh, it is a requirement of the backlot subdivision that a twenty five foot buffer be included, which is, as Mr. O'Connor pointed out, ten feet wider than the standard buffer. So it is, it's a requirement. And it's also suggested in the bylaw that the buffer be, to be to the largest extent possible, be maintained to obscure visibility and ensure privacy.
I'm glad to hear that because I, I think there are probably, it takes, it doesn't take long for some of these old forests to start falling, trees falling. I have it on my own property. And, you know, once they go down, they go down. And, you know, you're not required to replace them. Those privacy buffers are really essential, I think that's. Habitat, privacy, just the whole idea, right? I hope it, it's a thicket that gets, remains. Things, trees die, you know, the forest succession, things don't stay that way forever. Especially with bull brier and bitterzweig, they choke these plants and trees off and they die. So, I mean, it's not something that you can manicure all the time, but there have been issues where people, fences have been asked to be put up, they were, the vegetation knocked them down. And, you know, just ten years, five years, things grow pretty fast. I'm glad to see it, though. I think that's, that's a sensible, all things considered, that's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein. Mr. Gallo, I'm having trouble unmuting you. I can't unmute you for some reason. So unless you can unmute yourself, I'm going to give, oh, there you go, Ms. Gallo.
Okay, my question is, I think the first two lots, that they did a good job separating them out. I'm interested about lot three, would that, is the applicant willing to give that to the town? Or to give it to, I know there's different things out there for them to, how do I say, have tax relief? Or what would happen to lot three, I guess, I want to know.
I'm going to ask Jen Copeland to unmute herself and weigh in on this because there is some history with the town and the land out back. Ms. Copeland?
Hi. This parcel, I believe, was a nature study. So it was in conservation, was held as a sixty one B parcel as a nature study. And in two thousand thirteen, the open space committee looked at it to purchase as the right of first refusal. And it ranked as a medium priority. Again, the town looked at it in two thousand and nineteen and it was still ranked as a medium priority for land for the town to purchase for open space purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Mr. Gallo, it's important to note that that back lot is essentially all resource area. And it will never be built on. So you're talking about this entire parcel in just ultimately two house lots.
I know, but I know, I know people that own like twelve acres of marsh and maybe three quarters of an acre of outside. And they're paying for twelve acres of land, you know, that's unusable. So I'm just wondering what happens to that piece of the land, that's all.
Well, they'll, they'll have to, unfortunately, it appears they'll have to keep it and pay taxes on it.
Revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to address a question to Mr. O'Connor. You know, I see somebody coming in, buying lot two, putting up a nice house and staring out the back of that house and a lot of downed trees and climbing vines and mess in that twenty five foot buffer area. I'm uncomfortable when you say that we just put a condition on it that, that it has to be left as is. Isn't there some way we could open it up so that the new owner of that property might come back to us with ideas for cleaning up some of the dead wood? And just making it a little bit more attractive from, from his back deck?
I have two comments. I suspect the person who buys lot number two is going to be emphasizing the view to the marsh, that is, the view to the east, rather than the side lot. I think also, our thinking was that perhaps we buffer that home from the Pilgrim Road neighbors and we buffer the Pilgrim Road neighbors from that home. So I think a combination of emphasizing the view towards the marsh, that is, the view towards the east. And I'd stand by it, that we should maintain the buffer on the north side.
Including no ability to go in there and clean out dead wood?
We could make that a condition, dead wood, but you started, you started on a slippery slope that, oh yeah, that was dead wood.
Well, if I may jump in for a moment, dead wood actually provide a habitat for wildlife, for birds and animals. And when you go to Conservation Concom and you say, well, we want to just clear out the dead stuff and, and the briars and whatnot, they tend to take a negative viewpoint of that. Because that's all what makes this, this natural thicket underbrush such a wonderful environment. Spoke with a neighbor on Pilgrim Road this evening. And she confirmed what I suspected, which is that the wildlife in that area is absolutely terrific. So in my opinion, and I think Mr. O'Connor shares this opinion, the less we do and leave it exactly in its natural state, the better it is for a wildlife habitat. And like we discussed it at some point, I mean, this, this, at least to me, appears to be a resource area unto itself. So it's, it's a good question, are they going to want to look at, at trees and this thicket? Well, the lot is over eighty thousand square feet. So they'll have plenty of area that they can beautify and work with around their house. But I, I think it's a good question, but I, I think that, that's at least my take on it. Back to you, Mr. Clegg?
Well, you know, I raised this issue because I, I face a similar situation. When you have, when you have a lot that has not been tended for sixty, seventy, seventy five years, you not only have standing dying and dead trees, you have a lot of trees on the ground. It's not attractive. What recourse would a buyer have if, if the buyer found it highly objectionable?
Well, in this case, person buying the lot, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bezinski, the person buying the lot is building a house in the back lot. So the buyer is the one that is going to live ultimately with whatever decision is made here tonight. And then when they decide to sell, the next buyer is going to come in with eyes wide open as to what can be done there. If we make this a condition of the approval, it rides with the land in perpetuity. So somebody cannot, you know, somebody, it's not the same as the collect, somebody couldn't come back ten years from now and say, well, I want to clean that up, I want to make it look more attractive. And then, you know, it's up to the board whether we want to deviate from, from the approval or not. But everybody's going into this with, I believe, eyes open.
So the answer to my question then is that a purchaser of that lot who builds a house could come back to the planning board at some point in time and seek relief from that condition, correct?
Essentially, any special permit, anybody who holds a special permit can come back and ask for modification.
Got it, thank you.
Further, before I go to you, Ms. Goldstein, let me give other board members the opportunity to weigh in on this. Are there any other board members? I don't, I can't see every board member. So I'm going to ask you to use the chat feature if you want to weigh in. Okay, so I don't see any board member weighing in via chat feature. Now, we have a number, we have forty eight participants tonight, so I'm assuming that some of the folks are participating because of this project. So what I'd like to do is open the hearing up now for the public aspect of the hearing. If you would like to speak, just indicate that by way of the chat. If you want to ask a question, you're not comfortable speaking, that's certainly fine. But I want to give the audience the opportunity, oh, actually, Ms. Goldstein, before I open it up to the public, go ahead.
Well, it's not a large question, Lou. Is the word maintain a twenty five foot buffer, is that in the wording of anything, the word maintain? There must be a twenty five foot buffer maintained, or how is it worded?
Well, when Mr. O'Connor makes his motion, he'll, he'll, he'll use the language that he has crafted. And if you have a question at that point about the language, I think that could be appropriate time to ask that question.
Someone could plant in front of it if that was, the buffer has a start and an end, right?
Well, outside the buffer, there, there isn't a restriction, it's just within the twenty five foot buffer.
I understand.
Okay, I'm not seeing any chat request from the public. So, Mr. O'Connor, I'm going to give it back to you. I assume you have a motion to make in this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Based on the planning board review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, expert witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found the project is consistent with the Town of Born zoning bylaw section twenty four ninety for a backlot subdivision. And there is sufficient width, suitable grade, adequate construction area to provide the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use and the installation of municipal services to such use. The application number zero two dash twenty twenty meets the criteria for a special permit for a backlot division of the following, the following recommendations. Section to divide the land into two lots with lot two having a reduced frontage lot. Section twenty four ninety one with lot two having thirty five feet access, thirty five foot wide access strip. Section twenty four ninety two, because lot two will have more than eighty thousand square feet. Section twenty four ninety three, because lot two is capable of containing a square with sides equal to the normally required lot frontage of a hundred and twenty five feet. Section twenty four ninety four, because lot two meets the dimensional requirements and the lot shape excludes the road access strip. Section twenty four ninety five, because the access strip is and was not in the same ownership either at the time of application or any time within the preceding five years. Section twenty four ninety six, because the vehicle turnaround is to the satisfaction of the fire department. Section twenty four ninety seven, because the reduction of privacy and damage to the natural environment is greater than would be expected from a standard land division. Section twenty four ninety eight, because the reduced frontage lot two is shown and identified on the plan. Therefore, I move to approve special permit zero two dash twenty twenty in according with the following conditions. Condition one, maintain vegetated buffer in perpetuity within the ten foot setback between the property line of parcel forty seven point one, that is, two seventy six Williston Road, and the access drive to back lot two to the maximum extent possible. And maintain a twenty five foot setback along the entire length of the north, west, and south property line of lot two. Maintenance of the vegetation buffer shall be reflected as a covenant recorded on the deed and shown on the plan and disclosed to any buyer before sale of the lots. Replant areas within the ten and twenty five foot buffers which have been previously disturbed. This permit is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Born. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. O'Connor, you did touch upon twenty four ninety six, which talks about a vehicle turnaround must be provided to the satisfaction of the fire department. Do you also want to make that a condition of the approval?
Yes, let us, in accordance with section twenty four ninety six, the vehicle turnaround shall be approved by the Born Fire Department.
Ms. Copeland?
Just wanted to say that I heard from the fire chief and he was okay with the plan as presented.
Okay, well, I still think we can make it a condition, just so there's no question about who says what. Ms. Moore?
No, I was going to say the exact same thing. We received that email today at four thirty six. And we do have it in writing that he has no issues with the plan.
Okay, I, I like the idea of keeping it as a condition so that there's no question if somebody's reading our decision after the fact, they know that it's in there. So I'd like to keep it as part of the record. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor. Now, we do have a member, I'm going to ask for a second on, on the motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Who said second, please? Mrs. Zarevitz. Okay, Mr. Conad has asked to weigh in as a member of the public. I'm not, oh, here you are. Mr. Conad, I can't unmute you, you'd have to unmute yourself. Okay, you've been unmuted. Mr. Conada, we can't hear you if you're speaking, you have to turn on your audio. Okay, I'm going to, Mr. Conad is unmuted, we cannot hear him. I think he needs to turn on his audio. In the meantime, I'm going to keep moving forward with the board. But before I call for a vote, I hope he'll have the opportunity to weigh in. Is there any member of the planning board that wishes to speak with the motion on the table? Is there any member of the planning board that wishes to speak with the motion on the table? Ms. Goldstein?
I, I guess the word maintain, that buffer is there. But in the event that it becomes, it naturally deteriorates, are people, do they have to go before the conservation commission to get permission to replant? Or get, you know, to have a list of things they could put there? How does that get maintained over time? You know, I mean, they, you won't, huh?
Sorry, Chairman?
Yes?
Can I speak?
Who's, who's this?
This is Dave O'Connor.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
My sense of the word maintain in, in condition number one, maintain vegetated buff in perpetuity. That is, maintain the space, that is, the concept of the buffer strip will be maintained in perpetuity. I think Mr. Clegg's comment was a good comment, that perhaps as some of these trees become old and senile, it may actually perhaps threaten the house. And maybe we do have a mechanism for, uh, a person to apply to the, um, uh, planning board to modify the special permit, at least to remove a threat or to remove down property that has fallen out into the development zone. That might be a reasonable way to go. The word maintain in this sense is to maintain the concept of a vegetated buffer strip, not necessarily the physical act of planting to remove every dead plant.
Right, I'm not, excuse me, may I respond to that?
Yeah.
Just, I just wanna clarify it. What I meant was, if there is, a buffer is there for a reason, it's, it's natural habitat, it's privacy. And I'm just wondering how, uh, should it, I don't like, I didn't mention anything about falling on property or damaging property, but that could definitely happen, it just happened to me this winter. I'm just thinking in terms of, conceptually, it's there for a reason. But if it, if it disappears and everything's lying on the ground, then you don't have the privacy. You do have the habitat, though. If people could, I'm not saying clean it out, but maybe, sometimes things will grow up on their own. To try to make, to keep it as a buffer. I, I think it just needs, what?
Hello? Yep, uh, is Mr. Conard there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Conard, floor is yours.
Good idea.
For the record, would you say your name and your address?
Sure, it's Jeff Conard, forty Pilgrim Road. So, my wife and I just bought, uh, the house here. And, you know, we have to say we love the marshland, we love the beauty of the, uh, you know, all of the animals and the birds, you know, it's such a special place. And, you know, I have to say, um, you know, I'm not gonna begrudge anybody to build a house, but even twenty-five feet seems like, uh, it's pretty close to our properties over here. You know, with light noise and what have you, and, and we want, we wanna make sure that, you know, that buffer zone is there.
Mm-hmm.
And is there, you know, I guess I'm wondering why the house, if, if, if everybody wants to see the east view, why does the house have to be so close, even twenty-five feet, to our properties, not just mine, but our neighbors on Pilgrim? I mean, it is such a special place, and, you know, the wildlife there is just exceptional. So, I'm just wondering why that close? You know, I know, I know fifteen feet is the normal, and twenty-five is further, but it seems like there's a lot of space there, and if, if the folks that are buying it, you know, have their view, I don't know how they're gonna have a view of the east, because there's such a, there's a ton of vegetation and trees going that way. So, I'm just curious.
Well, they, it, it has not been made a decision where the house will actually be sited on the law. Um, you know, that, that box you see there is not necess-, on the plan, is not necessarily where the house has to go. That is a requirement of the zoning bylaws, that that, that that box fit on the back lot. So, the, the house, although the buffer zone is twenty-five feet, the house may be a hundred feet from the, from the site, yeah. There will be at least twenty-five, we know that.
Okay, and then, um, the, I guess the other question I had, will that whole lot, can that whole lot be cleared out of all the trees and everything? Going all the way to the, uh, I, I know I noticed a, I think it was a fifty-foot buffer to the, to the marshland?
Well, anything they do within a hundred feet of a resource area would come under the jurisdiction of the conservation commission.
Okay.
So, anything they wanna do, they have to file a notice of intent and go through that process. And if, in fact, they do that, you as an abbot would be notified and would have the ability to weigh in at a con-con meeting and share any concerns you have. What?
I have a question also, this is Ian Camerick. As far as the twenty-five-foot buffer zone, my concern is for the wildlife, that how is it determined that only twenty-five feet is enough when they have right now all of that acreage? I just can't see that they're gonna stay there in a twenty-five-foot buffer.
He, he, the zoning bylaws, at the twenty-five, which again is, is, in my mind, substantially more than the typical subdivision, that creates inadequate buffer. I think in this case, I've walked the land with Mr. O'Connor and Ms. Copeland. I think that twenty-five-foot buffer, uh, is, is an extraordinary buffer. I think it, it'll, it'll, it affords quite a deal, it create, uh, privacy, and maintains an important habitat. Again, they may, as I said, they may cite the house a hundred feet from the, from the lot line.
Yeah.
And, um, you may, there is nothing that would prevent you from putting a fence along, uh, the, the back part of your lot, uh, for even additional privacy. So, I, I, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Hello? Okay, who, who's?
Hi.
Second.
My name is Jerry Atkins.
Okay, hold on, Jerry, one second. Is that, uh, the Conards, are you all set?
Yes.
Yes, we are, thank you.
Thank you.
Folks.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Atkins.
You're Atkins?
I own the property at twenty-eight Pilgrim Road.
Okay.
If you folks have been around town for a long time, this was a property that was built by Joe Lucido, the realtor, many years ago. And when you come in off of Williston Road, uh, that driveway, there is a, a T-alarm car running in that driveway. And it goes to the left, and I assume that's where cars are gonna park, or turn around, or whatever. Is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. They will, but, but they design where a house is gonna go, they're gonna have to design a driveway with a turnaround that is adequate for emergency vehicles. So, at this point in time, no one can tell you exactly where the driveway is gonna be and how it bends. And it's gonna be subject to fire department approval.
Well, here's my, here's my thought, question, comment, whatever you wanna call it. If the headlights of those cars are able to pull in there, they'll be directed onto the rear of my lot. I don't want my privacy in the rear of my lot being disturbed like that. I think they should be required to have to do some kind of a blind fence or whatever that would prevent any headlights from shining onto my land. That's my question.
Well, I, I think, from my understanding, uh, motion is to do the twenty-five-foot buffer. Uh, the board, evidently, we'll find out in a moment or two, feels that's an adequate buffer. And as, uh, as I suggested to the Conards, uh, when I spoke with them earlier today and, and this evening, that there's nothing that could prevent you from putting a fence on your property to give additional privacy.
Well, these folks are looking to develop their land. They're looking for a special permit from the town. I don't see why, as a, I, as a resident of the town, have to go spend money in the rear of my land to afford what they want. Follow my, my reasoning?
I, I, I do, but also, they, they own this property, they pay taxes on the property, and they are abiding by the zoning bylaws. In, in this particular bylaw, when they meet the criteria, the bylaw says that they shall be granted a special permit. So, when they meet the criteria, the board doesn't have discretion here. That's, that's what it's in in the bylaw. Now, if, if anybody in this town has a, uh, doesn't like the bylaw, and there is a process for change in the bylaws, but in this case, the bylaw is pretty, pretty clear on its face. When you meet, there are, it, it provisions to it that you have to meet, and these folks have met it. Uh, so I, I, I hope, I, I know that answer doesn't satisfy you, but that is the bylaw, those are the rules. And these folks, folks that own this property and the subsequent owners do have property rights that, and that we have to respect.
I'm not denying them that, but I think I have rights as a property owner too, not to have the rear of my lot disturbed by what they wanna do.
We, we, again, we don't even know if, if any lights are gonna shine on your lot. I don't know.
But what if they do?
Well, again.
I mean, you folks don't even know where the houses are gonna be positioned, but you're gonna vote on approving it or not approving it tonight.
Well, we know where the building envelope is, and, and that's, that's all we can know at this point.
Location of the house should be mandatory.
Well, the location of these houses should be required now before they get approved, not later on. I think you're kinda putting the cart before the horse.
Well, again, that, bylaws are bylaws. They, they have to get their special permit first. They can't pull a building permit until they have a special permit. That's the process, where, that's, it's not putting the cart before the horse, it's the way the process works.
Well, getting a building permit, uh, is a little bit different from where they're locating the houses in order to get their permit, in my opinion.
I understand your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comment, any further comments from the public?
Yes, yes.
Okay, identify yourself and your address, please.
Glenn Tripp, two seventy-six Williston Road.
The floor, George, Mr. Tripp.
I, my question basically is just about the buffer zone. Living here in, in our backyard, we, we're, we're gonna be abutting the drive-through, the driveway, and the land to the back of our house, I guess, which would be east, actually. I've listened to all of, uh, the, the, the board, uh, members say that they've walked the land. Um, we have lived here about four or five years, and, um, going back to the buffer part, the, the, the trees here are all dying, they're mostly pine trees, and they are falling every storm.
Okay.
So, so when they're, when they're falling, who's gonna be responsible to, to clean them up? As I've heard other members speak about, you know, making it look presentable and whatnot. You know, the twenty-five feet is, is obviously ten feet more than the, the norm. But we got, like I said, we have trees fall almost every storm. There's trees leaning on trees here. And, uh, I think it was Mr. O'Connor or, or Mr. Clegg said how it looked awful because of all the dead, uh, the debris and stuff. Who, who is going to be responsible to clean it up and, and keep the buffer? I know that a falling tree is going to still be a habitat for animals, but at the same time, it's not really, um, aesthetic, I guess.
Well, I, I certainly understand your comment on that. I mean, to the back of your property is a twenty-five-foot buffer.
Correct.
And then to the, the, towards the driveway will at least be a ten-foot buffer.
So, it'd be ten feet off our line to the beginning of their driveway?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and I assume that, that, uh, because that has to be disturbed, there'll be some nice plantings along that, uh, ultimately, when it's done. But as far as clearing debris from that buffer, um, un- unless the homeowner or, or the property owner comes back to us with a, a plan, then it's essentially a no-touch zone. So, assume flash, flash flood, five years, get some cleaning that needs to be done in there, there's a tree that appears to be a hazard. I mean, the option and the opportunity is always there to come back in front of the board with a plan. Language, uh, I think is, is fair in the sense that it says it will maintain that buffer.
No, I, 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 I'm, I didn't mean, I, I'm not against it, I'm, I'm just asking about the buffer. It's like, the ten-foot buffer zone by our, where the, where the access road is coming in, access road slash driveway, there's a number of trees in there that we are afraid of parking our cars in our own driveway now. So, I, I don't know when and if they're gonna be removed, if, if, if that's part of their buffers, you, you know? I, I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but.
No, I, I, you're making yourself perfectly clear. And I know exactly where you're talking about, I know exactly where your house is. I mean, I think, we've seen this situation in the past where neighbors are sort of, uh, putting some building relatively close to one another. And what I would suggest to you is that when the driveway is ultimately going in, that, um, you work, uh, with the, the, ultimately, the owner of the back lot as to that driveway area, because.
So, we have, we, hold on just one second, Mr. Tripp. Sure.
We have indicated on our approval that, to the extent possible, in the driveway buffer, we'll maintain it. But the reality of the situation is you, you're gonna be driving cars up and down that, it can't have a hazardous situation. So, we, we recognize there's a difference between the driveway buffer and the twenty-five-foot buffer. And again, if there comes a point in time where it's an issue, we're, we're still here at the planning board, and, and folks do come back to us, uh, on special permits and ask to amend them, because circumstances change over time, we understand that. It, and frankly, it's not that difficult to get back in front of us if, if you do have concerns and issues like that.
Oh, no, no, I mean, I, I've talked to the, I've talked to the proposed buyers, and, I mean, they were actually very hospitable and said that, um, the trees in question, which are on their land, depending on where this, uh, the access road slash driveway is going, that they were going to take care of them. And, which is fine, I just was more wondering about, as I stated earlier, about the buffer zone, twenty-five feet seems more than reasonable, since the norm is fifteen or ten, whatever, uh, I believe. And, um, just, I mean, looking out my back window right now, there's probably three or four trees leaning on another tree, and eventually, if that one tree goes, then there's gonna be five trees laying down. Who is going to fix that, or make it presentable, so to speak?
Well, it, it, ultimately, the responsibility of the buffer zone is the property owner. So, so as you said, you, you have a rapport and a relationship with these folks?
I, I've met, I've met them once, but.
Okay, oh, fair enough. So, I think, I think it makes sense is to just work with them when that road goes in. Um, and again, if there's, if they deviate from the plan, or if there is a hazardous situation that's created, again, you can always come back to the board, and, and we will address any, any concerns at that point.
Okay, that, that's fair enough, I, I was just listening, I don't know the, um, the woman's name, but she was all about the, um, the maintaining of it, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at. I, I mean, I have no qualms about them building the house back there, uh, they have the, it's their land, they can build what they want.
Okay, Mr. Tripp, appreciate you.
Ken, I'm Mr. Tripp's wife, I'm Beth Buchanan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I had a question about the driveway proposal. Is there a way that it, it wouldn't be right along our property line?
It's the ten feet.
That if it was on the other side of the property, because it's going to, we're gonna see a driveway that a fire engine can drive down and turn around?
A, a fire engine, technically, they only need about fourteen, sixteen feet, so it's not, it's not gonna look like a two-lane highway. Well, I, I, I suppose what they've done is they've put the driveway at the most, uh, appropriate spot. I mean, Mr. Bezinski, I mean, is there, is there any other place it could go? I can't tell if there is one.
Now, based on the topography and the site grid, this is the, the appropriate place to lay it out.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what about the fire hydrant?
Because we met with the proposed buyers, and they had talked about removing the fire hydrant, and we didn't know that the town would do that.
Well, removing fire hydrants, the, the planning board has no say or jurisdiction over, uh, over that. So, I, I, the board can't really speak to that. Um, so I, I, the board can't really speak to that. Anything further from the trips?
No.
I'm, I'm good.
No, we're good, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Further from, I'll get to you in a moment, Mr. Clegg, I just wanna finish up with the public. Anything further from the public? Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tripp's comments kind of emphasize what was on my mind. I can't give legal advice, I'm not an attorney, but here's my understanding of tree situation. If there's a tree on my neighbor's lot that is healthy, and we have a big windstorm, and that tree, the top of that tree is decapitated and it falls over onto my property, my understanding, uh, and I have experience with it, is that I'm responsible for cleaning up what falls on my property.
Correct.
If there are dead or diseased trees on my neighbor's property, which pose a threat to my property, it's my obligation to go to that neighbor and say, "You ought to take this tree down." Because if it's a diseased tree and I put you on notice, if it falls onto my property, you neighbor are liable. So the conditions that we put on this, uh, special permit tonight, we need to make sure that they play to law and insurance coverage. We can't be preventing, um, a property owner from going into that twenty-five-foot buffer and removing a diseased or a dead tree that is a threat to a neighbor.
So do you wanna suggest, Mr. Clegg, a amendment to the motion that says, uh, I'll, I'll come to you in a minute, Mr. Bezinski, but do you wanna suggest an amendment to the motion that says any trees that pose a hazard to life and limb, life and or limb, may be removed or remediated? Is that something you, you wanna do?
I would do that, and I think you worded it pretty well.
Okay, so that's Mr. Clegg's motion. Uh, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, who, who said second? Dan? Dan, okay, Dan, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the, um, actually, Zach, did you wanna weigh in on that before we vote it?
Uh, just wanted to point out, section twenty-four ninety-three of the bylaw, section B, it says, "Within the setback, vegetation shall be retained and supplemented as necessary to obscure visibility." So if a tree comes down, the applicant is still responsible to replant and fix that, um, buffer zone.
I'm talking about, like, that hasn't come down yet, but it's a threat to the neighbor's property.
Yeah, I think, I, I think, I think you're talking about slightly different things. I, I, Mr. Clegg, that the motion addresses trees that present immediate hazard to life and or limb. So, uh, property damage for that matter.
May I speak, can I speak one, one, one quick one?
Yeah, yeah, I'll give you the last word on that, Mr. Tripp, then I have to put it to the.
All right, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, I'll, I'll give you the last word.
As, as far as, I, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Clegg, um, but as I said, we have met the neighbors, and they were very happy and willing to remove the, the said trees that I'm worried about, if, if that is actually where the drive-through is going through. So I have no problem with that at all, they said that they would remove them.
Well, I wanna make sure that our, that our, um, that our special permit allows them to go in and do that if there is a tree that's diseased or dead and poses a threat to your property or any other neighbor's.
But the, the, the trees that I speak of are just off of Wilson Road. We're not talking about the back lot right now. The back lot would be, I'd have the twenty-five-foot buffer zone anyway. I'm, the trees that I'm worried about are on the, uh, the, the Wilson roadside, I'd lot number one, that are posing a threat.
Well, we, we. My, my amended motion, uh, amendment to the motion would deal specifically with trees within the buffer area.
So, Mr. Tripp, it's not just the buffer between you and the back lot, it's also the folks on Pilgrim, to give them a little bit of protection as well?
Okay, no, that, no, that's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the amendment to, uh, a vote. So I'm gonna ask the planning board members to unmute themselves on just the amendment. Uh, Mr. Clegg?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Dusset?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvitz?
Yes.
Ms. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Okay. Now, on the motion as amended, um, further discussion from the board members. Ms. Goldstein?
Uh, I wish, i-if Zach could repeat the conditions of two-four-nine-three, section nine, the, uh, how the buffer is to be so-called maintained or continued. That's what I was referring to when I made my comment. That the whole purpose of the buffer is, is, part of it is privacy. And you can't guarantee that they'll be there forever. Trees age and they die, and you hope they don't fall on your garage or whatever, which is what Mr. Clegg is cleaning up that part of the story. But I, if he would just read that again, I think that said what I meant. It's exactly, I don't have it in front of me unfortunately. But if he could read that once again, I think that's pretty, pretty important. And I need to hear it again, if you don't mind.
Well, I can read it to you.
Please.
Within the setback, vegetation shall be retained and supplemented as necessary to obscure visibility. And.
And supplement.
I'm not gonna speak for Mr. O'Connor, and, and feel free to, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Connor, but the nature of this vegetation is such that i-if it's just left alone, it'll do its thing and create that, uh, privacy and obscure visibility. And Mr. O'Connor, if I'm not correct on that, please, uh, correct me.
No, you're correct. And the fact that it's twenty-five feet deep, um, there's plenty of opportunity for vegetation to reseed itself, and that's what it naturally does. It tends to want to succeed to larger and larger tree. But it will ne, I don't think it will become barren. I don't think it will, it will die out and become a dust bowl. I think things reseed themselves pretty vigorously.
Of course they do. But it won't become a dust bowl. But the actual wording of the bylaw says retained and supplemented, just to make it so that you don't have, people are concerned about their privacy and, and the natural area that they're in. And I see that and hear that a lot. And I think it's important to, I think this bylaw covers it. If there's a big open gap somewhere due to the natural progression of trees, do you have to wait for them to grow back? Of course, something will grow back, I know that. I think it would be, uh, it, it looks as though there can be a supplement. You could plant something there, whether you need permission for a certain type of planting. I mean, people probably need some guidance in what to put there. I think that's important, it's right there in the bylaw. I, I guess, and yet, my instincts are right on.
As always.
As always, but it depends.
Further from the board. Okay, I'm gonna put this to a vote. The motion is amended by Mr. Clegg's amendment. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Clegg?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Dusset?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvitz?
Yes.
Ms. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, it's unanimous. Uh, folks, uh, thank you very much, um, speaking to the public for sharing your concerns with us. Um, appreciate you taking the time to be here. Uh, Mr. O'Connor, thank you very much. Uh, you did a tremendous, uh, analysis. Uh, in a, in your report was very comprehensive, uh, and quite well done. I appreciate that, uh, your diligence on that. Thank you very, very much. Okay, uh, the last thing on the agenda is a public hearing for special permit number eleven dash twenty nineteen, one eighty-three Shore Road, born, court remand for findings. Uh, frankly, folks, on this, we're still working out some of the particulars. So we're not gonna have that, uh, hearing tonight. Um, we're gonna work out something with, uh, the various lawyers involved. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to continue that to a later date. Uh, it's not the type of matter that has any sort of time constraints to it. So continuing it, um, just carries it on, Mr. Clegg?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before you, um, ask for the motion to continue, I would like to point out to you that, that in the lawsuit that went to the land court, there is a, uh, charge in paragraph sixty, page twelve of the complaint that says that the planning board lacks the authority to issue the, the decision pursuant to section twenty-three twenty A of the zoning bylaw. The board, zoning board of appeals, was the only authorized entity to issue the decision. It was, has anybody looked into that? Because I, before we get into the, the process of a, of a hearing by the planning board, um, shouldn't we make sure that we have purview in this case?
That is the ball of twine that is being unwound as we speak.
Thank you. Agreed.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to continue that hearing to a later date?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Clegg? Mr. Gallo?
Specific to continue?
Do a, it, it's not a specific date, there's no time constraints on it.
Okay. You're asking for my vote?
Yes, Mr. Clegg?
My vote, yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Dusset?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvitz?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? I'm sorry, Ms. Goldstein?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, uh, motion carries. Uh, there's nothing further on the agenda, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's gonna be a roll call again. Mr. Clegg?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Dusset?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvitz?
Yes.
Ms. Goldstein?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much, uh, for the meeting tonight. Uh, I think it went quite well. Q?
Thank you.